Good evening, Mayor. We're ready whenever you are, sir.
Yeah, yeah. It's got eight restaurants in Michigan and three in this area. It's crazy what a small world running the people.
You want me to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
And Trustee Takaoke and Trustee Oppenheim both gave prior notice that they would not be in attendance.
Hey, would everybody please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and uh, is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook president Pro temp?
So made.
Second.
Third, second. Roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, okay, next item is citizens wishing to address the board or come on.
Chris Meyer, 371 Cherry Valley Road. I have some good news and a suggestion. Long Grove and Abbott finally replaced the fence behind my house. It's been, what, two years? They also cut down all the weeds. The next thing we have to address is the berm, which is out of Long Grove code, was built without a permit, and so they're addressing that. So I thought that was great news.
Good, good.
The second item is the intersection of Hawthorne and Lakeview. It's always been an aggravation to me and probably a lot of other people that it was four individual signals. Now that the road is being repaired and just about completed, I'm one rank and perhaps...
It's actually, it's actually only been three.
Or three.
Yeah.
Why can't it be left and right north and through and left and right east-west and through traffic? Because there's never that much traffic coming in or out of the Hawthorne Commons, the shopping center, the shopping mall. And perhaps with the new flashing yellow lights, which are becoming more common.
So to look at having an east-west crossing and a north-south crossing as opposed to an east, a west, and then a longer north-south.
A north-south.
Right, yeah, okay, you're saying rather than having, we, we call it split phase whenever you have.
Right.
East goes one time, west goes another time, and then north-south at the same time.
Right.
Yeah, we, we can certainly look at, I, I have to look with the final, with the new traffic signals and the new lane adjustments, how that's timed. They, they set that up while, when, the way our engineers look at it, the traffic, when they do their studies, is they want to maximize, or minimize, I'm sorry, the wait time in each different leg. So you usually have it when you have turning movements like that east direction, when a lot of people are turning each time.
Right.
And you want to hold that turn longer. That's a lot of times where you see one leg will hold. So they, they put in a model to see, what's the best way to get all the traffic through in any given phase? Because each time you take away from one, the amount of time a green light's up, you have to add, or anytime you add to one, you have to take away from another. So it's kind of playing a game, but we can certainly look at it. Whenever they put these in place, there's always an installation period where the engineer is out there watching traffic, watching it go, and they make some real-time adjustments to the timing whenever they commission new traffic signals. So that's always a part of the process.
It just seemed to me it would make more sense. But I'm not an engineer, or traffic engineer. And also, I know it's probably impossible, but on the south leg, southbound leg and northbound leg at 60, a lot more traffic turns right onto 60 than goes straight. And the same for northbound. There are two left lanes and then a through lane. And sometimes if people are far enough up on the southbound lane, you can make a right turn. It would be nice if we just had one left, one through, and one right.
So again, it's, it's set by the, the amount of traffic.
Right.
Our engineers have looked at exactly how many cars make each turning movement, each straight.
Right.
And so with the new configuration, which isn't, isn't out yet, you know, once they wrap up the paving over the next several weeks and put the new traffic signal equipment in, and the new lanes are striped, I'm, hopefully you'll see a, a big improvement in the way traffic flows through that area. And, and it will help that, that turning movement as well.
Yeah, the previous was two lefts and one.
Two lefts and one.
And now there's going to be at least four lanes there with the new, isn't it, isn't it?
Yeah, it's going to be two lefts.
Two lefts and two straights.
And two straights.
And so that right straight will help take care of a lot of what you were talking about. There's now going to be two separate northbound lanes as opposed to the one.
Right.
That's the new, that's what's being built there.
This would be helpful, probably, if it was a right turn also, but...
Well, but, but with the second, the second straight lane, that'll take a lot of that right turn.
That's probably true.
Yeah.
We, we had this discussion when this was being proposed, I remember, and the conversation went to, people will learn new habits, knowing that there's two through lanes, but the right lane will probably be more popular, turn right, and then people go in the left lane. So it'll alleviate a lot of that traffic, but also give more options.
Yeah.
Because there are some times when you have, you know, they, it would help both lanes making that light to go through, go on, say, Greg's Parkway or something like that. So I think that's why they said no specific right turn lane, let's keep, you know, and the people who are going to turn right, majority of them will just use that lane, and the other ones will use the left lane to go through, so. We did look at this.
I seriously doubt it.
Well, we'll see, but I mean, habits do change once, when that's what, where choices are. But we did look at that, and that's kind of like, engineers all came back and said, no, this is the best. Because they look at traffic counts. They look at.
Of course.
Number of cars, where they're going.
Right.
Times a day, and they just, it's, at the end of the day, it's kind of like, you know, where's your best bang for the buck? Right?
Okay. But if you will consider the Hawthorne and Lakeview.
Absolutely. And once you see it in place, you know, we welcome any feedback that you get. I, I would say just, you know, hold tight in the next several weeks. Hopefully, we have everything up and running, and you'll, you'll get to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm glad the fence is taken care of.
Yes.
We've been working on it a while. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay, then official reports under the village president, Vernon Hills Park District, the Illinois Association of Park District Intergovernmental Cooperation Award?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are we doing today?
Good.
Good. David Doroffer, President of Vernon Hills Park District Board of Commissioners, with me tonight. Our fellow commissioners, Bruce Robbins, Carol Sente, Jan Seraldo, and Abra Jacobs, and hiding in the back is Jeff Fujuru. And we just came here to say thank you. We attended, Tom, I believe you were there, Nancy, you were there as well. We had a gala, what they call a gala, for the best of the best in the state of Illinois when it comes to park districts. And Vernon Hills government and Vernon Hills Park District was awarded the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for this year. And we just came to say thank you for that. We have between us 10 intergovernmental agreements about cooperating and basically taking the taxpayer's dollar and stretching it farther. And I can't tell you how many meetings I've sat in where I've had vendors ask us point-blank, how do you guys get along so well with your government? That there are so many towns where they're fighting each other about everything, and we just seem to get along. And I know it always hasn't been that way, but it is now and has been for a long time, and that is in large, large response to you and your board and Mayor Byrne and to our board. So we just came to say thank you for everything. We really appreciate it. The residents appreciate us getting along and cooperating, and we couldn't do what we do without you. So, thank you.
Now, thank you, and it was, and it was a enjoyable evening, and, yeah, an award, I think, well-deserved, and, and we're just happy to be part of it.
Appreciate it.
We're going to get a picture if we can. Why don't we ask if the trustees just real quick could stay, maybe slide in, and I'm going to have the park board come behind the dais. I'll just take a picture.
Sure, that's fine, yeah. Yeah.
This is yours for the keeping here.
Well, that's Arbor.
You guys stay seated.
Yeah, okay, all right, it's okay. I can sit on the floor, I think my hair comes up about so.
Do you want to sit? Or you guys want, you want to sit in those?
Or...
They want us to.
You guys sit.
Are you sure?
Yeah, you start something. At your age, you better sit.
I know, that's...
You mind?
That's a lot. Yeah. Watch.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you guys take off, I just want to, you know, commend our park district. It's one of our foundations in our community, and you had said something that I know I take great pride in, is the, is the cooperation of all the foundations in the community is very important to me, from my seat. I know our, all of our trustees, it's just, life is easy when everyone has the same goals and mission, and we're very lucky. You know, as you said, there's other boards not too far away that battle it out, and at the end of the day, it's about our residents, and we're all residents, and we care about our town very much. So thank you all.
Well, and it's, and it's always been our philosophy, we have, I mean, we have the, an independent library board. We have, you know, several school districts. We have an independent fire department with their own elected board, and it's important that we work with all of those agencies as closely as we can, because, as I've said many times, it, it's the same constituents. That's what makes it easy. It's, we all represent the same people. So we, we should be working together. But thank you.
Well, and I, I want to add too.
Good, Mayor.
You know, we've been fortunate also to have, let's, let's face it, surplus fundings as a village to help these other governmental bodies. And that's, you know, to the credit of the board and staffs over the years, because, yeah, we've been able to participate in actual funding, you know, to get projects completed.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I couldn't agree with you more, and we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
All right, Dave, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, take care.
Okay.
One other thing I wanted to throw in here under, under the village presidents, because I wanted to do it right away at the top of the meeting. We went to the grand opening of the domain, the residential component of the, of the new redevelopment of the mall. And I just wanted to pass on to especially the senior staff that are here, it's always very pleasant to go to those things and hear the kind of comments we hear about how easy our staff is to work with. They start telling us how, how, you know, they appreciate what the village does, but they especially are always extremely complimentary towards how they're, they're handled by everybody from, you know, from this building, anytime they have any dealings with anybody on staff. The comments are always extremely positive. So I wanted to pass that on, that they just, every one of the speakers that got up from the different representatives that were there for, for that ribbon cutting, were just effusively complimentary of every part of our government and everything that they've had to deal with. So thank you to staff and, you know, and senior staff that are here, pass that on to the people that, you know, that have worked with those projects. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next item then is the 2024 meeting schedule?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Oops. We, we discussed this briefly at our last board meeting. I just wanted to take another moment to review and then get an approval this evening so we can publish for next year. As I mentioned, we're required by the Open Meetings Act to publish a meeting schedule prior to the calendar year. Based on our conversations at the October 17th meeting, before you is the proposed meeting schedule for next year. I'm going to note a couple of nuances. We normally meet, as you know, on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. In January, we have moved those to the second Tuesday and the fourth Thursday to accommodate some schedules of the board and also the New Year's holiday. We have normal schedules all the way through the month of July, where in July, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays, we have in the past. In August, we have our traditional one meeting in that month. Normal schedule in September, October. In November, our first meeting is going to be held on the prior Monday in order to accommodate the general election. And then ending the year in December with, again, our traditional one meeting in that month. So if there are any questions, we can entertain those. Otherwise, we'll just be looking for a motion by the board to approve the schedule, and we can get that published on our website.
Motion to approve the schedule?
Second.
For 2024.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any comments or questions?
Can I just, clar, a little clarity? The, they're all Tuesdays except for the 25th of January and the 4th of November, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
And Chairman Pro temp Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Director of Finance, because you're going to, John, you're going to speak later, correct? Okay, all right. Director of Finance, anything? Okay, those are just reports in there, okay? Chief, we're down to you.
Thank you. I'd like to just take a, a moment before I get into my, what's on the agenda is to highlight a little bit of a community safety reminder. We did put out a news release in recent weeks that we had a robbery in town where a citizen arranged after an internet transaction to have a sale of a, of an item and agreed to meet in a shopping center parking lot. And unfortunately for the individual that was selling the item, he was actually the victim of a robbery by two individuals. Fortunately, we were able to make a case in that and arrest one of the individuals, and the investigation is ongoing about finding a second party involved. The gun was recovered. This certainly had risk to the, the victim and risk to the community. It's a moment to highlight that a significant reason why we were able to make that case was the addition of more automated license plate reader cameras that were provided for in a grant issued by the Illinois Attorney General for the primary purpose of thwarting organized retail theft. But in a case like this, if a crime happens in a shopping center, we don't have to use those cameras just for retail theft. And so it was very important piece of information to make a, a very quick arrest. The officers on the scene did an amazing job tracking down the suspect vehicle moments after the crime, and we were able to make a really good case. But it highlights a reminder that we've made several times, and please spread the word to your loved ones and your friends that might choose to engage in such a transaction, whether you're selling a car, whether you're selling anything to someone that you don't know. A very safe place to make such a transaction is in the parking lot of your local police department, whether that be Vernon Hills or Libertyville or anywhere else you live. We tend to be open 24/7. We're always there, and it's a pretty good clue if the individual doesn't want to meet you in the parking lot of a police department, maybe that's not a, a good transaction. So we just remind the community, we are a, a safe zone for such transactions. I look out my office very frequently to see people out there having such transactions. It makes me feel good, and we just want to make sure the community knows that's a, a great thing for them to do.
Yeah, that should be a serious red flag if they don't want to meet you there.
Yeah. We call it a clue in police work.
Yeah.
Let me, let me switch gears and, and on, on the dais for everyone is a brochure, the highlights on the back of it, kind of the background of how we got into where we are. And I just wanted to take a minute to update the village board and the community on our progress to date, and that we're really at a threshold moment here in front of us in the next coming months on really highlighting tremendous efforts to consolidate a number of 911 centers. We refer to those as PSAPS, Public Safety Answering Points. And this, this, this brochure here highlights the problem. And if you look at the, the top three images of the maps, I refer to those as jigsaw puzzles, that's the current situation in Lake County. And what we have now are a bunch of leaders working together to try and solve that problem. Because when you have that much difference of jurisdictional lines of who answers the 911 call and who dispatches for police or fire, it causes a tremendous delay. And our collective goal and those leaders that are working on this is to streamline the process of getting the right emergency resource to the right location in the shortest amount of time. And our goal, our, our hopeful goal is to turn those maps into the lower one, the gray blob, I like to call it. And this is tremendously important as our society has gone away from landlines and uses cell phones for the vast majority of 911 calls. It's important that us as leaders remember that people don't just call 911 from their house. And so rather than individual communities asking, what's it going to cost to run a 911 center in my town, or do I need a dispatcher in my town? I think for the first time in a long time, you've got collective public safety professionals and other leaders around Lake County really recognizing that what's in the best interest of all of our constituents in the county of Lake. And so that's been the driving force for this effort. I wanted to update the board that we're, we're at a kind of a threshold moment where I expect in upcoming months, we'll be bringing to you an IGA, which will be establishing this new intergovernmental partnership agency. Fortunately, we've already had some tremendous leadership steps taken. I always compliment, I'd like to compliment again, first and foremost, the county board has seen the tremendous need to do this, and through their leadership, they have funded the building which is being built today in Libertyville on Winchester Road, a state-of-the-art 911 center that will be, enable all of Lake County to be served by one location. A very, a very specially designed building, weatherproof, with all kinds of contingencies in place to make sure this, that we can continue to, to serve. But also compliments to you and the other village boards that have provided us funding over the last several years. We've come and asked for funding to do these planning steps and these initiatives. It's been a tremendous amount of work. So I, I think we're in kind of the beginning of crunch time here. There's about an 18-month window where we've got some IGAs, some further partnerships to develop. We've got to figure out some costing. Our goal would be that all of these jurisdictions agree on these next agreements that we have to come to terms with and are operational in the new center by, by summer of 2025. And that seems a long ways away, but I, I can tell you with the amount of work we have to do now in, in front of us, there's, there's a lot to get done. So, you know, we, we talk with our employees a lot about this. Our goal is to have all of our employees that want to continue to work in this field will, will seek employment in the new organization. We're taking great efforts to make sure they're supported and that they see that this is a benefit for their professional development. They'll, we're envisioning an organization that, that is going to be much larger than any of ours, that any of our single organizations have a lot of potential for professional development. So there's, there, again, a lot of work ahead. I'll be back in front of you probably in the next 16 to 90 days with perhaps a couple IGAs and laying out what the future agreement looks like. But I thought a great opportunity to just remind you the progress we're making, highlighting some of the threshold points we're on. And with that, I'll stop and just see if you have any, any questions I could ask, and if not, Kevin and I will be back before you, probably in the next two to three months with more action to consider.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
Something we'll need it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good work, good work. Okay, next item is winter preparedness update. Director Vannata?
Yeah, thank you. So whether we like it or not, winter is coming and severe winter weather is coming, so we wanted to take this opportunity to give a winter preparedness update. So I'll start by just giving a, just a high-level overview. A lot of this you may already know, but the village, the, the village of Vernon Hills public work staff, we, we maintain 165 lane miles of, of streets throughout the wintertime. We also oversee several contractors, including James Martin and Associates, which is on the omnibus agenda tonight to renew their contract. They handle the cul-de-sacs for us, as well as working with other HOA contractors to make sure we're giving an excellent level of service throughout the community. As most of you know, the main roadways in town, Route 60, 21, 45 are handled by IDOT, and then Butterfield Road is, is maintained by Lake County Department of Transportation. As far as our public work staff go, throughout the whole season, we obviously have crews on call 24/7. You know, anytime there's, there's a storm, we have a group of six staff that come out to do salt operations, and whenever we hit the larger storms, anything above two inches, our entire public work staff comes in to, to plow the streets. And we have 19 different pieces of equipment that are in play at any given time with plow trucks and pickup trucks doing our parking lots, sidewalks getting plowed. So it's really a robust operation. They, they spread over 1,000 tons of salt each season. So I, I, I don't know if anyone remembers, but when I started here back in March, I was, I was on the job for two days, and we had our, that end-of-season snowstorm. So I obviously hadn't fully gotten the lay of the land at that point, but the, the staff really just did a wonderful job, and, and I've been really impressed at this, what the public works department here is capable of. So just a couple tips, though, as we get into the, the winter weather. So I, I recommend anyone and, and the, the community to go to our website. You can search "snow and ice" in, in the search bar or navigate there through the public works page. We have a, a webpage that has our, our snow plan, as well as a FAQ to give a lot of information. Some of the big highlights during the storms is, is one of the number ones is, there's, there's no parking on village streets within 12 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. We really want to get all the vehicles off the road. This helps us plow quickly, efficiently, and get done in a safe manner with reducing any property damage. What, what goes along with that is with the, the garbage bins. We ask that if it happens to be storming on your trash day, if you can put them in your driveway and not out in the street, it's really helpful so that we can effectively clear the road. And then, once a pickup happens, removing them as soon as possible after that point. Along with plowing driveways, the, the residents, there's, the village code doesn't allow pushing any snow into the, the streets. It's especially important for our business partners and parking lots not to push snow into the, into the roadway or on the sidewalks. We also ask, if possible, to wait to clear your driveways until the village has already come and plowed the road. We, we see this being a, a source of frustration within the community. You plow your whole driveway, get everything clean, then we come through in the street and push a drift right back in. So it really helps everyone. The longer storms, we understand it gets hard when it just continues to snow and we're making multiple passes. But if possible, wait to, with the plow crews come through before you, you plow your driveway. Also, a little tip, which we have a nice picture on our, on our website. If you're looking at your house, the right side, so like the direction travel, traffic's coming, if you can clear an area of, by your driveway or by the curb there, that saves a little bit of that snow from getting pushed into your driveway when the plow trucks come through. So push all that snow to the downstream side of your, your driveway in the direction of travel. And finally, as much as we like to, to, hope we can do a perfect job and not hit anything, sometimes depending on the snow and the conditions, mailboxes get damaged. We ask that you call as soon as possible, that you notice something, call the, the public works department. We'll come and put a temporary mailbox out. We have a mailbox policy, as some of you may know, that we will, we have two options to the residents. One, we'll take care of everything. You just, you let us know, we'll come You just let us know, we'll come out, we'll give you a standard mailbox, a standard post. We do that in the spring. Once there's no more plowing, you'll have the temporary out until then. Option number two, if you want a custom or you want something else, you can pick out any type of mailbox you want. You install it yourself. We come and check and make sure it meets the standards. And if so, we'll reimburse you $150 for the material and time and effort to replace that mailbox. So with that, I'll feel free to answer any questions. And otherwise, you know, hope we all stay safe and drive safe this winter.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Feel you.
Do you by any chance need drivers? You know, the reason I was asking is there's that sign on Butterfield that the county's looking for.
Yeah, they conveniently put that right in front of the concrete plant where the trucks are coming through. We actually were, we have public works as seasonal, a seasonal posting for our seasonal laborers. We are at full staff right now, luckily, is one of the first time in the last several years, I think, that the public works department. So we're confident we're going to be able to do a, you know, be prepared for this season. But we do have, we are accepting applications for seasonal laborers.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, then there's nothing else from anybody on staff, right? Okay, then next item is omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through O?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Can I just ask one question on D, the timeframe on that? We don't need to pull it or anything, but Centennial Crossing, the wall?
So this is for, this is for consulting services. So they're going to be working on this over the next several months to come up with the design.
Probably next year sometime?
Yeah, the plan is to put the actual construction of repairing that wall in next year's capital improvement program.
2025?
Well, no, construction in 2024.
Construction in 2024, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schink?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye, motion carries. We have no unfinished additional business, correct? All right, then new business in communication, Assistant Manager of Patrol.
Good evening. As we prepare our slides, a couple more pictures of beautiful Vernon Hills that we've experienced this fall. And as we approach Thanksgiving, we have an opportunity to celebrate the season of sharing. And this is the annual reminder that the Vernon Township Food Pantry is collecting items to support both individuals and families in need. Vernon Township Food Pantry provides nutritional food to individuals and families throughout the year. Items that are needed include non-perishable food, canned goods, including beans, vegetables, and stew, as well as toilet paper and paper towels. For a full list of items being requested, persons can visit vernantownship.com and enter Food Pantry, and there is a link to the 2023 wish list. Donations are being accepted at the Village Hall on behalf of the Vernon Township Food Pantry. As we approach the holidays, this is a reminder of the Police Department's partnership with the United States Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots program. Toys for Tots was started in 1947, and the campaign to collect toys runs from November to December 11. Through community support, the Marines are able to distribute toys through social welfare agencies, community groups, and faith organizations to children whose parents and/or caregivers cannot afford to purchase gifts during the holidays. Many Toys for Tots giveaways are conducted in early December, and to help make this logistically possible, collections are occurring now through December 11. The Police Department is the primary collection drop-off point, and the Village Hall is a secondary drop-off point. And save the date for Saturday, November 25 at 4:30 PM at the Vernon Hills Muni for our annual Holiday Tree, menorah, and Kwanzaa lighting event. The Vernon Hills Police Department will be escorting a fire engine operated by our friends at the Countryside Fire Protection District, and we're hopeful Santa will be riding as well. Join our pageant queens for the countdown. The Muni will be open, and hot chocolate, cider, and cookies will be available. A beautiful event to welcome in the holiday season. And on a somber note, staff learned of the passing of former village trustee Robert Shaw. Staff spoke with Robert's daughter Kathy Johnson, who is here with other family members this evening. Staff learned Robert passed Saturday, October 21, at the age of 91. Robert was visiting family in the Fox Lake area when he passed. For background on former trustee Robert Shaw, Robert served in the Korean War and was initially trained to be part of a tank crew. As the amount of casualties in the war increased, Robert was assigned to serve as a medic. Robert's daughter shared that her father's experiences in the war had a significant impact on him. After the war, Robert married Barbara. And like many veterans, Robert and his new wife began looking for housing. In 1961, Robert learned of a new subdivision being built in Lake County and purchased a home in what is often referred to as the original section of Vernon Hills, with streets that included Westmoreland, Cherry Valley, and Greenbrier. Robert and Barbara raised a family that included six children who all called Vernon Hills home. Approximately 10 years ago, Lynn Brandl had an opportunity to interview Robert on his experiences and obtained content from some of the early events that occurred in Vernon Hills. During Robert's time in Vernon Hills, he served as a village trustee and president pro tem from 1965 to 1969. We have included a brief video from Lynn's segment, which shows an early community gathering in what became known as Vernon Hills Days, and a video of a community parade in what has become the annual July 4 Holiday Parade. Robert Shaw was an organizer of both of these events. As Robert was a veteran, staff is working with family and the American Legion to ensure Robert is honored in 2024 with a military banner. Mick Zawisilak wrote a very nice, in-depth article on Robert, which appeared in today's Daily Herald. We have reposted that article on the village's Facebook page. Robert's daughter Kathy asked if she could address the board. Kathy?
I'd just like to thank Mayor Byrne and, on behalf of myself and my siblings, Kim, Karen, Mark, and Mitch, I'd like to thank Mayor Byrne and the board for recognizing my dad's contribution to Vernon Hills. Special thanks to John Petrillo for listening graciously to my stories about my dad, and to Bill Wagner, my dad's very dear friend, who notified the board when, it never even crossed my mind. I gotta say Vernon Hills was the last thing on my mind those days. My dad was 91 and full of life, and we had lunch at Petrillo's in Vernon Hills after driving through Elmhurst, his hometown. And he said he just couldn't believe how Vernon Hills had grown. And then he started talking about Adeline Giochares, and, you know, hiring her, that that was the greatest thing he ever did for Vernon Hills. And I just really want to thank you all. And he would be so pleased, you know, they used to meet in a motel room, literally, at the Tally Ho Golf Course. And when he met, I think he tells about this in the story, in the interview, when he met Adeline, he went to the Mundeline meetings, and he was like, we need an attorney. And so he told her, well, the problem is, we can't pay you, and we're five guys who meet in a motel room, but will you represent us? And Adeline did, and they were very, very close friends. And so Adeline, my dad, Joanne Kirstangie, Ron Algrim, Chuck Waugh, just those original people. I look around here and I see this, and the Park District, and I think it's, I love that they were here tonight because my dad so loved the Park District and was so adamant about building a community where families could be and have fun. So special thanks again to John Petrillo for all of your time and for reaching out to the Herald, because that was a lovely article by Mick. And Vernon Hills really was an amazing, magical place to grow up. And so I wish you all the best and keep up the good work. Thank you again for recognizing our dad.
So you just mentioned, I'm very sorry for your loss, but Adeline Giochares is my grandfather's sister.
Oh, really?
So you and I would love to have a cup of coffee.
Yes.
Because the stories of her that I know, for her to take, you know, and Robert, I bet they were a good force.
Oh, my gosh.
A solid force, getting stuff done.
They really were.
Knowing her, so.
Yeah, and he, oh, he loved her. He really loved her. Both of my parents did. And, you know, was so grateful that she was so gracious to represent the village, because they really couldn't pay her, you know? They did not pay her, I don't think, for many years.
I'd love to hear the stories.
Yeah.
One day.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Noted that Kathy flew in this morning from North Carolina to be here for this board meeting. So thank you for your safe travels, and know that your father's image and service will be flying in a banner in 2024. And we'll do everything we can to maybe put it on in front of your house.
Yeah, Gio served us for many years after that, and was an amazing, an amazing person, one of my favorite people in all the time I've, you know, been on the board. She was a, boy, a force to be reckoned with. I mean, she was a mayor, a state official, an attorney that was very powerful. And, yeah, she, that Bob and them hiring her was, that was, you know, getting her to come in and help us was just a great thing. So, so thank you for...
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I got an addendum. This is Jermaine DiGio. DiGio said, I love you dearly. That's when you knew you were in trouble.
Yes.
So it's her setting the record thing. But I remember she, I love you dearly, but...
Yeah, yeah.
And the butt is what got you.
Yeah.
So God rest Bob's soul.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, and thank you so much.
Anything else, Ken?
Anything else, Ken? Trustee Schink?
Oh, hi. Thank you. So this week, every month, many of us attend the District 128 Mental Health Committee, which is a committee we started, ah, it's been over a year now. It's designed to bring stakeholders, teachers, education, law enforcement, police, fire department, local officials, psychologists, social workers, anyone who has an interest in helping with finding solutions for people who need mental health or substance abuse support. And what we've been doing is creating resources for people to draw on if they encounter someone who does need help. And this last week, Dr. Michael Carner, the Superintendent of Lake County Regional Office of Education, showed us his referral GPS, their referral GPS program. And it's a web-based service focused on assisting students, staff, and community in finding local mental health and substance use-related treatment. And it complements the district's existing systems of support for student services. What is really good about it, if you ever trying to find, say, a mental health professional for support for yourself, your child, an older individual, the wait times to get in is just out of hand, three months, four months. This system will pair you up with, you put some information in there, you don't have to have insurance. If you have insurance, it'll show you providers that are subscribed to this. And there was somebody, there was a, I don't know if she's a teacher, I think she's, she did some of the support staff at one of the schools for '73. She used it, and she was, basically, within two days, she gets an email or a phone call, and she has an appointment with someone. And it works out versus waiting four months or not knowing who to call. So it's, do we have it on our website? I know it was on the village Facebook.
So we can put a link under services in the website?
Yeah, it's really a great service. It's funded, I think through grants. It's available to district students, staff, and families at no cost. So, and it's Lake County, which is a great thing, because there's a lot of people who do need help that are afraid to find help, or they start the process, and they just don't know where to go, and they stop. And, you know, and as we know, Chief Creasy were there, you know, you get it, you know, very much. And referralgps.com, check out our website. I highly recommend it if you are in need and you're not, you don't know where to go. It also coupled with our 211 program, Lake County's 211 program. And of course, if anybody is interested in attending one of these mental health committee for District 128, you know, just let us know. You can email me, and we'll get you on the list, and you can see what it's all about. But it's all about resources. And I had asked, I took a poll of the people, I think there's, chief, there was 25 people there the other day. I think I took a poll, I said, how many people have used resources that you've learned here at one of these meetings for somebody else? I think 75% raised their hands. So it's a good thing that we're doing. So thank you for giving me the opportunity. Can I ask about unfinished business? I missed it. Train horns. Any update?
So as far as we understand, the, what I've heard from Buffalo Grove is that they're hopeful that all the remaining deficiencies will be completed by the end of this week. I know that we just submitted to Buffalo Grove all the paperwork they needed to submit to the FRA, so everything's been signed. So as soon as the final improvements are taken care of, they hope to submit by the end of this week to the FRA, and then, that's the Federal Railroad Administration. And then what we have heard to this point, there would be a quick turnaround on inspections. So we're hoping, it could be as soon as next week, that they start inspecting the 56 or 58 crossings. I don't, from what I understand, it would take a couple days to do that, and then there's a couple days of paperwork. I still think that everyone's hopeful to have the train horns be the quiet zone reinstated by Thanksgiving.
Great. Thank you.
That would be good. That would be good. Okay, anything else under new business in communication from anybody? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and go to the Committee of the Hall?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion of second?
All in favor.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Yeah, because we don't have executive session Okay, we'll take a moment here.
Gio would come in our house and lie.
Okay, I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall Meeting to order. Is there a motion to approve trustee Cook, President Pro Tem?
Motion to appoint trustee Cook.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Schink?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. First item is the approval of the Committee of the Hall Meeting minutes of October 17, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Okay.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schink?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Second item is the vertical subdivision of Hawthorne Row and the Domain.
Thank you.
Director Jennings?
Thanks. The Hawthorne Row Domain project was the first phase of the Hawthorne Mall redevelopment. As you may recall from prior discussions, the developer of that project had intended to separate the commercial portions of the property from the residential elements, so it would be possible for them to be owned by separate entities. They are gearing up to a date where they anticipate closing out the construction documents for the project, and would like to try to set things up to create the division of the parcels to align with that date, hopefully by the end of this year. What you see here is a plat, or at least a portion of the plat. It's an 11-page plat document. I've taken excerpts from it to sort of illustrate the main dividing lines. What you have on this slide is the ground-level view, which shows a common area parcel, a residential parcel, and a commercial parcel. There are multiple lots of the commercial parcel and two lots of the residential parcel. The idea being here that at each vertical level, you'll see the ownership change from piece to piece. The next level up, the common... The next level up, the common area parcel drops out. And this would be where the parking garage ceases being retail. I'll flip back so you can see the parking garage again. So the parking garage is a, is a portion of a retail parcel at the first level. Beyond the first level of the parking deck, it becomes a, a piece of the residential parcel. It's sort of absorbed into that and the commercial. Because the commercial units are taller, you still see commercial parcel above the first floor of the garage. And moving on up, everything above the second level of the garage is the, excuse me, everything above the retail is residential within the buildings. So with that, the developer has presented to us a declaration document that goes along with this. It's a lengthy document. The village attorney and I have gone through it and will continue to go through it. The intention here is to get the initial concept of this subdivision in front of the Committee of the Hall so that hopefully as they finalize the document and the declaration over the next few weeks, they would be able to place it on a omnibus agenda for the actual ordinance approving the subdivision. There is a representative of the Focus and Centennial team here if you have any questions on the subdivision. We are not looking for any vote, just sort of a consensus. If there's any, any feedback that you have for either myself, village attorney, or Focus and Centennial, we could take that feedback and incorporate that into the, the final work on these documents.
Yeah, it, well, it seems, what's that? Oh, okay. All right.
Now it looks like it's. Commercial break.
Hello?
All right, Mayor, we're ready to resume.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. Welcome back.
Okay. Yep?
So by way of a brief recap, the, the two, the developer for the Hawthorne Row and Domain Project is seeking to separate the commercial portions of the, the project from the residential. This is a concept that had been included early on. This is the first time, though, that we've actually seen a plat of subdivision. What the developer is requesting is the, is a conceptual review of the, of the plat, which you can see here. It's a multi-page plat. I've taken three pages from the 11-page document to just illustrate the main points and shaded them in to make it clear what, how the parcels will be divided. So at the ground level, there's a, the gray area is commercial parcel, excuse me, the gray area is a common area. The blue area is a residential parcel and the red area is the, the commercial parcel, which is comprised of several different lots where the walkways separate the commercial buildings. Also, at the first level, I would just point out that there's a, a piece of the parking garage is considered a commercial lot. The first level of the parking garage is, is part of the commercial lot. As you go vertically up into the next level of the parking deck, that level, you can see here, becomes part of the residential parcel. And all of the levels of the parking garage from that point up are part of the residential parcel. The reason you still see commercial at this, at this level, which is from about 11 feet off the ground to 22 feet off the ground, is that the retail units have a higher ceiling. So once you go above the retail ceiling, everything is part of the residential parcel. There are some provisions in these documents that explain how the retail units have rights to the mechanical chases and mechanical pads above the residential unit on the roof. But that is getting into the weeds a bit of how these documents are constructed. So at this point, the, the developer, the village attorney and myself would appreciate any feedback as the, as these final preparations and these documents are completed. The intention would be to bring this back as an omnibus agenda item at the next meeting or possibly the December meeting. With that, as I mentioned, there is a representative of the Focus and Centennial team here. If you have any detailed questions, I'm also happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, it's, it seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it's no different than a standard subdivision of, other than the fact that it's vertical as opposed to all at ground level, right? I mean, it's.
There are some elements in, in the declaration that, that supports this that explain how each lot contributes to the common area maintenance. That does get a little bit complicated when you've got a vertical subdivision. But they have, they've been working on this for some time. But yes, it is substantially similar to a two-dimensional subdivision.
Comments or questions from the board about this? Yeah, Counselor, this seems, I mean, it, it's, is it a relatively new concept because of these new types of development? Is that what's?
There's always been vertical subdivisions.
That's what I thought.
The easiest way to think about it is in a condominium building.
Yeah.
There's fee simple ownership of a piece of the sky, right? Each unit has a PIN number and they all share in the common area maintenance. So this is becoming more prevalent with mixed-use developments, with retail on the first floor, residential on the second floor. It's almost always the case that it's under different ownership. Here we have the apartment buildings owned by one entity, retail owned by another, and all of the various entities will contribute to the common area maintenance. The declaration that Andrew mentioned is a lengthy document that will be recorded against all of these parcels. So anyone that purchases a piece of the retail or the residential, the declaration and all the obligations go with the, the property. So that will govern maintenance. You know, our concern as we look at this was to be sure that there's maintenance coverage for all these, you know, all the various common areas, because there's a lot out there, right? There's, there's the plaza, there's walkways, there's landscaping. And all of these various entities, there will be an association essentially formed.
So the common areas, like with the condo association, the common areas are joint ownership?
Exactly right. They'll all use it, so they will all participate in the maintenance. This is the absolutely correct way to do this. And we, we were aware of this for many, many months going forward, so. Yeah, all, all we're looking for is a consensus, really yes or no. If we, we just need some direction to work with the development team to finalize the plats and the, and the declarations. So really just a, a polling of the board.
Trustee Schenk?
Yeah.
Trustee Markwart? Trustee Forster? Mayor, you have anything?
Yeah, who's here from folk?
Vic Howell is here.
Who? I can't see him. Who is it?
He's coming.
He's coming.
Evening, man. This is Vic Howell with Focus.
Yeah, how you doing?
Doing well, how are you?
Okay, okay. I just wanted to have you get some airtime.
I appreciate it, yeah. I, I do love to talk, so, so whatever you got, I got plenty to say.
Okay, well, no, I, I, I agree with the, the board that we should obviously let this go forward and, you know, re-subdivide vertically. So now have you started on the, the, the second, you know, the new buildings yet?
Uh, work, work has not started and those conversations are ever active and we have plenty to, plenty to work on and really get going. You know, financing has, has been one of those things that's out there, but there's wheels churning for sure. Nothing's set in stone, nothing in the ground yet.
So, yeah, so this building where Carson's was.
Correct, yeah, yeah, for that, for that site. Site is clear, we're really just eager to get the site work started and then obviously the vertical construction as soon as we can get going is, is the goal.
Yeah, because the first phase has been, is out, you know, has turned out outstanding. It was, it was nice getting a tour of that and, and seeing how well it turned out.
Yeah, much appreciated. And Mayor, certainly anytime that you're able and, and willing and want to stop by to see it in person, we'd love to, love to have you.
I appreciate the offer. Okay, anything else on this item?
Nope.
No, okay, all right. So you've got our consensus.
Okay, thank you everyone.
Okay, next item is discussion of a Class Q liquor license. Again, Director Jennings?
Thank you. We have had discussions with a business that has been looking at units within, focused mostly at the town center development, but also near the intersection of Milwaukee and Town Line to relocate an existing business into, into Vernon Hills. We're not able to name them at the moment as they are an existing business in a, in a nearby community. One of the challenges that they have in looking at these spaces is that they, they are a packaged wine store. There is, there are spaces that certainly would allow for that. They also have a need to have onsite consumption. We don't have a liquor license that is a perfect fit for them. And the closest match that we have is the one that the, the board approved for the Liquor Barn, which is a supplemental license, the Class P license, that allows very limited onsite consumption. In their case, it was specifically for rare bourbon so that customers who might not otherwise have access to, to a very expensive bottle of bourbon could buy a single glass of it. And so that was the focus of their license and it was tailored to them, the size of their unit. That, that particular license, the Class P supplemental license for that, that sort of limited onsite consumption does not work for, for this business. The, this business is a packaged wine store. It's much smaller. They intend to have several tables and they do, they intend on having some food service. So what I've drafted here for a discussion by the committee is a Class Q license, which is substantially similar to the Class P. Again, it's a supplemental license, but it's reduced the size. It's tailored more specifically to the, the wine store. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We're only looking for feedback so that as they negotiate with, with landlords, they have some type of idea that this type of license would be considered favorably.
Well, a thousand square feet, that's pretty, is the big thing, the fact that it's smaller than what's in the current Class P? Is that?
It is both the size of the, the unit and the total amount of, of, of wine per day, per customer.
That was going to be my question. What, is it more, is it, is it like a bar that sells packaged liquor or what? I mean, how much consumption are we talking?
It is, so they were requesting, I believe the, the Liquor Barn, so the Class P, again, was focused on, on bourbon. And they had suggested a wine serving equal to a five-ounce glass and you could have two, two per customer per day.
Right.
So that would equate to 10 ounces total of service.
These people want a 16-ounce pour.
They want total six, the total 16 ounces per customer per day.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the fact that it's a wine store that's going to have that much onsite consumption.
They do intend to have more food service than, than what, you know, I, I had kind of looked at the possibility of them even being a combination of an A and a B. So onsite with the ability to sell for offsite. But it doesn't seem that they, they have a significant enough amount of, of, of service to, to match what's typical in an A license.
And this is how they're presently operating?
This is correct. That's how they're presently operating.
So they're operating under the Class Q?
They're, they're not in town currently. They have, they have no.
They want a Class Q, though?
Yes, I, I've drafted the Class Q based on their operating model.
Because the Class P, which, who has a liquor barn?
It's just liquor barn, correct.
Has for the sampling. And that allows 16-ounce bottle or glass, right, or up to?
Uh, it's two five-ounce glasses, so 10, 10 ounces total. And again, so it was a combination of the, the total square footage of the store and the, the size of the, the service.
Oh, sampling, okay. So wait, so there's, you can buy at Liquor Barn a 16-ounce bottle or glass, but if for free, for no charge, it's two ounces of beer. Is that, is that, I'm reading that right, then?
Yeah, that's, that's the sample size. So that's distinguishing between.
A sample or a purchase?
Yeah, versus purchasing a, a glass to drink onsite.
And they want a Q, this company, correct?
Just, it is a.
It would fit what they want, is what you're saying. So what did you say? You said, what are you worried about?
Well, I was just wondering how much onsite consumption it would be over the course, I mean, first of all, the 16-ounce, I'm surprised they didn't go for 18 because a standard wine glass is either six or nine, is a general. You know, wine pour is either six or nine, I believe, which would make 18 a better number to figure out.
But wine is one ounce each in a single day, four samples of one ounce each.
Roughly, yeah, an eight-ounce.
Well, no, generally, generally in a restaurant, you'll get either a six or a nine ounce pour.
Six or a nine ounce.
Yeah. Trust me, I pay the bill on that enough that, I know, I know, so. I just was, you know, wondering why, you know, that small of a place, that much consumption. And now you say they're talking about some food and that, so, I mean, I guess we can go forward. I don't mind going forward and looking at seeing what the language looks like as we put, as you put it together.
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to give them any feedback whatsoever. If there's a suggestion to modify it, I, I can go back with them. The, the main point of this was to sort of assess the comfort level, to give them some feedback so they would have some, some idea that as they continue to negotiate, there's a high likelihood that a, a license that is more tailored to their business would be possible.
And, and what you're basically talking is that, that, that ounce number is a per day, per customer type thing?
That's correct, per day, per customer.
So you think they want.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Sorry, they want to capture the, the purchase of the glass versus a sample given out?
Correct.
That's what they're trying to capture more of?
Correct.
And that's the 16-ounce.
I mean, because like I said, we have other places in town where, you know, you can already do that, so.
And that's Milwaukee and 45, right?
They, they were, they're, they're looking at multiple locations. So the, the, their preferred unit at the moment is within the town center.
Yeah, I believe we've inhabited that at grocery store in town, so I think.
There, there is a, there's a, a Class M, I believe.
Pat, any issues? Chief, any issues?
No concerns on my end.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
If you could clarify for me, where will this be located? In the mall?
They're, they, they are currently looking at the town center at, at 45. They had, they have a, just generally speaking, though, they've looked at units. They had originally looked at Melody Farm. There's a lease restriction there because of Whole Foods. They were looking at the shops at Greg's Landing. There's a similar lease restriction there due to Mariano's. So they're, they're somewhat limited. So they're, they're open to locations, but there is no lease restriction from a, a, an existing tenant at the town center. So that's why they're negotiating there at the moment.
Well, where exactly do they want to go in?
It was, I'm trying to think of what, what the actual address was of the unit that they were looking at. But it was within one of the vacant units at the town center.
Huh. Okay. What else on this one?
Uh, that's it. I'm just looking for consensus. If there's generally a positive reception to this, I can go back to them. If there's a negative reception, I would let them know.
No, my, my concerns have been answered.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then our fourth item is the 2024 Vernon Hills Days budget discussion?
Yes, thank you. Well, we are just about a little over eight months away from next year's Vernon Hills Days celebration. The dates have been set for Thursday, July 18th through Sunday, July 21st, so please mark your calendars. Staff has been working with the Vernon Hills Days Committee on already planning for next year's event and one of our first steps in this. year's event, and one of our first steps in this process is to establish our budget to use for our planning purposes. Wanted to take a few moments this evening just to review some history of the financials of the, of the event and then talk about some parameters for our upcoming budget for, for the 2024 event. In front of you here is just a quick snapshot that Director Lyons put together going back to fiscal year 2019, which covers the 2018 Vernon Hills Days Festival, all the way through the festival we had this past year in 2023. As you all know, we did not have an event in 2020 and 2021. So the first thing I'll address your attention to is you'll notice that pre-pandemic, we were used to getting upwards of $30,000 in donations. We did see a reduction in that coming out of the pandemic. Fortunately, that is, is starting to climb again, so we were able to take in about $14,000 worth of donations for last year's festival. Our event sales have also had kind of a, a flip. Pre-pandemic, our carnival sales were about just over $100,000. We have seen a, a large spike in that since then, jumping now closer to about $135,000, $135,000 in carnival sales. From an expense standpoint, we, we have seen our entertainment budget be relatively steady. There have been some ups and downs in various years depending on specific bands, but overall somewhere between the, around the $100,000 range. We have started to see inflation impact some of our expenses, in particular coming out of the pandemic as it relates to things like tent rentals, porta potty rentals, some of those larger expense items. But overall, our expenditures in the last five years or so have been relatively flat. The only variance you'll notice year to year is really dependent on the carnival sales. So the way that our carnival contract works is the expense is a percentage of the overall revenue that's taken in. So in those beginning years when we had less revenue come in, that obviously impacted the expense that we had on the expense side, and then as our sales have increased in the later years, that's caused an increase to those expenses. But otherwise, everything else has remained relatively flat. Overall, the event has about a net operating expense of about $120,000 or about $4.47 per resident. So again, as, as we're planning for next year's event, we really wanted to make sure we had some parameters from the board. The challenge we have in planning the event from a budgeting standpoint is that the event that takes place in July, as you know, our fiscal year starts May 1, we normally don't approve our budget until April, and so that leaves a lot of time in our planning process where we don't necessarily have a draft budget or, or an approved budget. And so as we begin that process, we want to make sure that the board is okay with, you know, generally the, the budget parameters that we have here. For the most part, the draft budget that we've put together is pretty status quo. There's one item that I wanted to get a little more direction on this evening, and that's relative to our entertainment budget. We did get some feedback, some from board members last year, that there perhaps might be some additional consideration for increasing the entertainment budget if we're able to attract some larger national musical acts. And so I previously shared with the board some materials from our booking agent, it's proprietary information based on the pricing that's involved in that, but it was meant to give everyone an idea of the national acts that we'll be touring in 2024 and within certain price ranges what acts are charging. A couple of things to note, we, we did not reach out to all those acts specifically yet, so it's not, it's unclear if they have availability on the date of our event in 2024. The other thing to note is that that was the price only for the musical act. With our musical acts comes additional costs for production, stage, et cetera, hotels, travel, depends on the act, so that was simply just the cost for the band for performing for an evening. And then the last thing to note is that different musical acts come with different requirements, so some, some larger acts might require a larger stage and a larger production. Because we're a four day event, we, we would, in essence, have to incur that larger cost throughout the full four days, even if it's just for one musical act for one evening. So things to consider, our, our traditional budget is about $105,000. That covers the, the back line, which is things that are in the rider for the band, food, transportation, those types of things. The musical act, which was about a $55,000 budget historically. The production, which we have seen a little bit of increase for, for the stage and the trailers, that was about $32,500. I'm sorry, the production was more of the lights and the stage, and then things like the trailers and some ancillary expenses was about $12,500, coming to a total of about $105,000. So again, we're looking for direction from the board. We'd like to, in the very near future here, work through our booking agent to secure an act. Acts are starting to fill up for 2024, and with that, I can answer any questions or open it for discussion with the board.
So what, what kind of, to move up to that next tier of acts or act, like, what are we looking at? Because if I recall, last year's Park District paid for one night, right?
That's correct, so the Park District did pay for the Saturday night entertainment last year.
So we have to pick, pick that up this year, right?
We would be picking up the full event.
So we gotta keep that in mind. I mean, I think to open it up, you know, allow a little bit more expend, you know, expenditure to bring in. I mean, I don't know what you guys all think, but you know, a couple of big name acts, if you can knock out two big name acts throughout the weekend, I mean, I think that can really be, and spread them out, however their schedule is. I'd be okay increasing the budget, but I just don't know how much.
Yeah, a, a, a big name act or two, or one of the local that has the huge following, like all the years we've had, Mike and Joe, and that, those kinds of bands will bring, you have a lot of people that travel with them too, so.
And people of all ages, because who was it, who was it last year that brought in just a, it was an older crowd, but it was filled, it was packed? I forget who.
The Buckingham's?
Buckingham's.
On Saturday evening?
Taylor Swift is out, right? That's, that's, there's, there's no budget for that, right? Okay, I'll tell my daughter, so.
Yeah, I, I, the Chiefs will have, the Chiefs will have started camp by then, so.
Well, she might be available, you know. Do we do, I mean, is a 50,000 increase kind of spread out? Because as you do it, you also gotta, it's not just for the musical acts, you gotta look at the production, all that stuff too, right? So.
Correct.
Is that something that we can afford? What can we afford?
How much were the Buckingham's?
I don't have the information, that, that was secured between the Park District and, and the band.
Uh, we definitely have some flexibility to look at additional acts if, if we want to look at it that way.
I apologize, I'm joined with Brandon Atkins from our summer, our Vernon Hills Days Committee.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we can look at some expansion and then the actual numbers will come when you finally get an actual name or two and know what they're gonna, you know.
So we're, we're looking at, again, the, the status quo budget is about $105,000. I think what would help us is, is if there's a ceiling for a budget that you want us to not go beyond, that will give us the flexibility to work with our booking agent on giving him a price range that he could look with, look within. And then the way this would work is we would make sure that there's consensus between the board and the committee on, on which act they want to pursue. Our booking agent would make an offer, if they accept the offer, then we're, we're then committed to that.
Rain or shine.
What were you looking at? One, one, move it 150?
I was gonna say 175. Because what I'm trying, what I don't have here is, so last year, Park District picked up Saturday, previous, do we have it previous year? COVID, I can never remember with COVID.
We had, we had 2022, yeah.
So what was the entertainment budget then? Because that one, we probably paid for all four nights, right?
Yeah, so if you look at the entertainment line, the only thing you would have.
Oh, it's fiscal year.
The only thing you would have to subtract from the entertainment would be about $16,000, which was the fireworks.
So it was actually less in 20, I don't know, we had Mike and Joe, I think, that year too.
Am I not correct, though, what you'd probably look at is a bigger band would be the Friday and Saturday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, Saturday night would be.
I think we had Bowdine's that year, did we have the Bowdine's that year?
Jefferson Airplane or Starship.
Jefferson Starship was 2022.
So I think that's what you look at, unless you're saying if Friday night the biggest, do you, do you soften it for Friday night or, or do you kick it for Friday night and Saturday night for bigger bands?
Oh man, can go back to back, that'd be awesome. I mean, I would, I think 75, going to 175 would give us some good flexibility, doesn't mean you have to use it all.
Well, and also as the booking agent is discussing these, if it's a matter of, maybe it's 180 gets something else, I mean, we have.
Got another one on that.
Flexibility to learn what our options are.
Yeah, I'm good.
That's why I think a ceiling would help, you know, a, a number we definitely don't want to spend beyond this number, and of course, we wouldn't spend it just to spend it, so giving him that, that price range would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Tom, is that number absorbable? Is that a word?
Yeah, it's definitely doable. I'll defer to Kevin on, if he has any input from staff as far as a limit, but yes.
I think the only other consideration, you know, ob, obviously a larger act is going to draw more people from outside of the community. I'd want to make sure the chief was comfortable with being able to, you know, be, keep the ground safe and, and the festival safe for that evening. We also don't charge for our festival, so this is a pure expense, that, you know, there's no offset of, you know, we might sell more beer or, or potentially more carnival rides because of more people coming, but there's no, you know, we don't spend more and maybe make more in revenue necessarily.
No, no, you're looking at a town enjoyment.
Well, we've, we've had some fairly large name acts on, on occasions, I mean, and the biggest crowd still, I believe, is the Rick Springfield night, that was, I think that's the biggest one I remember.
I remember that night.
Does, like the food vendors, I felt like we had a pretty good amount of food vendors last year, right? That was good, because I think in past years.
Pre-wish you're not.
You know, keep growing that, keep growing that, and I know it's all based on what's good for them, but there was a lot of offerings, which is great, great job.
I think it was about eight, eight, eight or nine?
Well, and one of the problems we've had with the food vendors, we, we've talked about it, is they're having problems staffing.
Correct.
Their, their permanent location, let alone coming up with people to staff a temporary location, and so that, that's one of the things that's hurt the.
Do they pay to be there or no? They just, they, do they pay for electric or what, how does the word? They pay a fee to be there?
Yeah, they pay a fee for the tent rentals and then a portion of cleaning for public works and, you know, the porta potties and all that.
So they do pay a portion, okay. I don't know, we can try to get a few more vendors, obviously want to saturate certain vendors, but. Chief, is Better Fridays, having back to back Fridays, Saturdays really busy an issue with your staffing or not really? No, right?
No, this is something that the officers look, look forward to, and because it doesn't fall on a holiday, we're able to reach out to our partner agencies to help staff this, and as you've seen, we've actually supplemented some of our security measures with private security to free up our officers to do some other duties, so, no, if this is a direction the board wants to go and you bring a bigger act in, I'm, I'm, I'm certain we can, we can meet the, the needs.
All right, so.
Yeah, Mayor.
We're actually gonna bring this up to what? 180, 175?
Yeah, we were talking 170, yeah, 175 and with a little bit of a fudge factor if you need it.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
And, and there is, there is opportunity too for growth as if the participation increases over the years to bring that donor, donations back up too. If it's a bigger turnout, more donors may.
Well, and that might help pick up an extra donation or two if you're sponsoring a, a bigger name act, somebody might be more inclined to put their name on it.
One call out on the donations piece, the, the previous years used to have the cultural partners, so I think they donated to the village as a whole, which is why you see larger numbers there. Personally, I think last year was our best year in, in going out and, and getting donations specific to our event, and we're continuing to work towards finding ways to grow that as well, so.
Good. Anything else on this? How you liking it? Taking charge?
Yeah, you did great last year, it was all good. Cashless, are we going cashless this year? Yeah? Working towards it.
Okay.
All right, so we'll use 175 as the, the budget range with our booking agent and, and report back hopefully very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Someone tell trustee Tacooka that it was okay spending more money. He's always on me about tightening the wallet.
Okay. Anything else on this? Brandon, any questions or comments? Okay, all right, then is it time for a motion to adjourn? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Roger.